Hi, everyone. We're just, we were waiting on the chair, but I'm not sure what's going on. So we actually do have three members on and we only need we only need four for a variance. So for special permit, we only need three. So we can, we can move forward and maybe Jason will join us as we go. So I'm Kathy Franzen and I'm going to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, November 4th at 7:30. Well, 7:40, excuse me. So I'll just take care of some housekeeping first. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law 30A and section 20 relating to the 2020 coronavirus outbreak emergency, the November 4th, 2020 public meeting of the Groveland zoning board of appeals shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner, basically on Zoom, which is what we're doing. So I also have one other thing I need to read. This open meeting of the Groveland zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020 due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Groveland Board of Appeals is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. So tonight we have new application, application number 2020-3 for 301 Main Street from Mike Aldrin requesting a variance to utilize the site for the purpose of personal use. Hobby shop, tool storage, vehicle storage, personal vehicular repair. Section 4.5 of the Groveland zoning board does not list a personal use as an allowed use. The site is located in the business zoning district. The proposed project is located at 301 Main Street in Groveland, Mass. 01834, Assistant's Map 10, Parcel 001, and owned by Zhong Yang, 10 Blue Jay Road in Linfield, Massachusetts, 01940. I guess now we're also in receipt of a a letter from the Town of Groveland Inspection Services by Sam Jocelyn, basically rejecting their application because they did not conform to zoning. So that is why the applicant is here in front of us tonight. So I'd like to have the applicant talk a little bit about what their, what their application is, and then maybe Sam can pipe in if there are any further comments beyond his letter.
Kathy, if I may interrupt, could we have a motion to open the public hearing for the application prior to getting into the specifics?
You, this is why we need Jason. So could I get a motion to open the public hearing on application 2020-3?
Sure.
Seconded.
All those in favor, Chris Goodwin?
Aye.
John Stokes?
Aye.
Kathy Franzen?
Aye.
Okay, now we can turn it over to Mr. Aldrin.
Good. How's it going, everyone? So as I had listed everything, it was just gonna, we're interested in just using the garage as just a personal use. As it's not being used as anything right now, we had moved into the space not knowing and not really knowing that it would be an issue. But it was just personal. I thought maybe it would be the same as if Mr. Lee had his stuff in there. So we had moved in early and then come to find out that it's actually not allowed. So we're just looking for the approval from you guys. If it would work out, you know, in our favor, that we could keep our stuff in there, just as a tool storage, personal vehicles. We have motorcycles, cars, antique cars, and just trade stool, trade tool stuff. So we're just kind of, we want to get that approved. That we don't want to change any physical things on the outside. It's really it. And this is Mr. Dow.
Sorry, my name is Timothy Dow. I'm looking to rent the space with them to do the same sort of things, you know, antique car, motorcycle, things of that nature.
I have a question. Are you are you doing any repairs on the site or are you basically just using it for storage? Like what, what are the daily activities, I guess, that are at the location?
Um, so I mean, for instance, like I have a 1955 Chevy pickup truck and he has older BMWs. So I mean, there will be repairs, but as it would be our own, like I have motorcycles, Harleys and stuff. So we're just looking for somewhere to kind of store them, especially where winter's coming up. And of course, you know, with that, we're, there'd be small repairs and everything, not things with like, we're not looking to bring in customers and stuff. And nothing of that nature, just, just our own stuff. And so, yeah, there will be repairs, but not, I don't really. I don't know how to.
The public.
Yeah.
There wouldn't be any public repairs. It would just be maybe like my mother's car, if she needed brakes, I'd go up there and, you know, just somewhere warm and indoors to work on things. Cause I don't have any space where I live to work on anything and it's going to be snowing and everything. So just somewhere warm and dry to work on our own stuff.
Yeah, it's a good space. I mean, for the size and everything, it kind of fits us perfect. I mean, it is in the downtown and we, we do understand like what's kind of going on and the complications with it and everything. But I'd like to make it work for everybody, you know, that's in our interest, whatever needs to be done, you know? It's a, it's a perfect use, I mean, space for us, for what it is. Yeah, we just wanna, we wanna work with you guys and just figure out a way to make it work and kind of just go from there.
So would you have any vehicles stored on the exterior or would they always just be in the garage?
They would just be in the garage. I mean, that, that's really it. I mean, as for like, in the rear, I don't know how any of that goes. Like, because the river is there, I don't know if there's anything like that. But for the most part, the parking is just going to be right in front of the garage doors. That'd be our personal vehicles that we would drive up there. And then whatever we have would be parked inside. Behind the doors, we did tint the windows and everything already. Those are blacked out. So you can't really see inside anymore. I think it's a lot more presentable from the outside because you can't see what was in there before. So, yeah. So I mean, everything will be just parked in the inside. I want to try to avoid leaving anything or eyesores, you know, of that nature on the outside and just put everything in the inside.
Cause at this property, there have been, there's a history of, you know, basically parking issues, you know, having customers come in and the parking. So the parking that's there is pretty much adequate for the post office, but not a lot of extra for anything else. So I know that that has definitely been an issue that's been before us before. And so
Yes.
What, um, one of the reasons why I wanted the building inspector Sam to join us tonight was because I just wanted to double check with Sam about his letter because you basically are appealing his decision. Basically, that technically, that's how that works. So you appeal his denial essentially. So I just wanted to make sure that Sam was on here in case he had anything he wanted to add, or if there had been any enforcement issues prior to today. Just, would you be willing to give us a little?
Yep. So like the, the gentleman said, they had moved in prematurely. I went down, talked with them. They immediately, as far as I know, ceased any, any further use in the building. I did post the building just to make sure that it was clear that it was, you know, not occupiable. In the meantime, they did get a architect to go in there and do an evaluation and issue me a letter as to what needed to be done to get a new certificate of occupancy. So those steps have been taken. The, the letter itself had to be written as a variance because of the way our bylaws written. It is not one of the allowed uses listed in the table. Or if I tried to make it fit something, it was a, a non-permitted use. If I tried to call it a garage, it's not permitted. If I tried to call it commercial storage, like contractor storage rather, it's not permitted. So I thought the best, I guess, route or the other route would be to, you know, have it what it is, which is personal storage. The issue with that is the footnote A under the use table talks about any use not specifically permitted is prohibited. Which is why we're at a variance. You know, it, it, it did seem like a low impact proposal. But again, you know, my job isn't to determine whether I think it's a good project, bad project. It's just what is the, what's the zoning say and send it off to you guys to make the hard decision. You're welcome.
Thanks, Sam. He's so swell. But no, I totally get why you had to do it because there, there is, they don't fit in any of the boxes that are determined in the table. So
Right.
They're sort of a round peg in a square hole. And so, okay, is there anyone else that would like to add any comments from the board, questions, Chris, John?
So basically, there's going to be no cars left outside unless they're their own vehicles that they drove up there.
Yep.
And work in there.
Yep. Yeah. Cause we don't, the last thing we want to do is interfere with the post office parking situation. I know that's tough already. And we don't, we don't want to interfere with that. I mean, it would basically be the same thing as if ourselves were going to go into the post office and use it and then leave. Except we'd be going into the garage and staying longer. But like I said, we want to just park in front of the garage doors only.
Like under the awning?
Yeah.
That's up, that's there.
Right. Okay.
Just stay out of everybody's way.
Now, what about storage of flammable and stuff? You're going to have a lot of fuel or something in there?
Not, not flame, like not fuel. I mean, we may have paint. I don't want to say fuel. I mean, the cars that'll be in there.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, like say, say the truck or the car that's going to be in there for the winter. I really wouldn't, that could be drained. Yeah, yeah. It could be left low or drained. I don't know what's more dangerous, if it's full or low.
I meant like five gallon gas can.
Oh, no, 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 no. I know. It is probably a good idea to pick up one of the flammable cabinets just for paint and everything. They have on job sites and everything, just to kind of put it in there just as a precaution. I think that would be good.
One of the concerns I have is used oil, that kind of thing, you know, if you're doing oil changes, that kind of thing, where is that stored? Is it removed from the site immediately? Because I can see that the chairman of the conservation commission is on here, Mike Dempsey. And I'm sure that and I know that this property has conservation issues because of the river and because of its proximity. So I am 100% sure that that is going to be an issue, you know, if you do have any oil on site. They're going to be definitely concerned about any type of leakage, anything like that. So I think anything that you can do to minimize any type of you know, leakage of any kind. So, you know, even from the cars themselves, I think that is a concern as well. So, you know, gas, you can drain. Okay, that sort of makes sense. But what do you do with the oil? Do you want, you know, if it's sitting there for the winter and it's dripping, who's going to notice that kind of thing? I, I think those are the concerns that came to mind, but conservation may have more on the subject because of the way that 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 property lays out.
So I mean, as far as like the, if there was an oil drip or something like that, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna be in there quite often. It's not like we're just going to leave it and kind of leave for the whole winter. And as far as oil, if we were to do an oil change, I mean, most of the time what we do is just put it back into the five gallon or the five quart jug. And then go drop it off at the auto parts place and they take it back. So I mean, I'm not looking to really store the oil there. As in like a shop would do with maybe a waste burner system or something like that. It's not one of those deals. I just want to, if I do change oil, it's going to be disposed of properly. And it wouldn't be outside or anything like that. It would be in the garage to stay away from the river. That's, that's not, you know, we want to do it proper, you know?
Yeah, as if you would in your own garage in your backyard. Like when I do an oil change, I put it back in the gallon and bring it right to AutoZone or something like that when I'm done with the oil change. So I don't think there'll be really anything laying around. Shouldn't really be anything.
There is, there'd be a new, new oil in a sealed jug.
Sam, do you want to have, is there visually a way to look in if you're ever driving by, if the windows are all blacked out? Or do you want to see something so you have access to at least see that everything's okay if you're driving by and someone says something?
There's no real way for me to see it. You know, my concerns, if it was approved or something, a question certainly to ask are, you know, we do have other concerns with, with zoning as far as noise and odors. So bodywork, painting, air tools, those types of things are certainly something to consider. If this is something you're considering moving forward, there can certainly be, you know, a periodic inspection type of thing. I mean, I drive by there at least twice a day, coming and going to work. I have kept an eye on just because I know the neighbors are certainly concerned and want to make sure, you know, things are put through process. I haven't really seen any activity there again, but it's only, you know, I'm only capturing all of two minutes. You know, during the day that I'm driving by, it could be the wrong times. It could just, you know, so my perception from driving by is I haven't seen any activity and they've obeyed the orders. So I'm, I'm happy with that. If that's not the story, then, you know, I have bad timing and, you know, certainly would like to know. But, you know, it's, it's really, you know, this is a tough one. My concern is how to get around the, the variance criteria to give it the approval, even if it's something that the board thinks is is approvable and trying to find a good legal standing to, you know, support the board. But if you do move it forward, again, my concerns are just noise, odors, traffic, parking. I think they've addressed the traffic and parking. It sounds like it's just going to be the two of them stopping in to do work, you know, as time permits or pick up tools. So I don't think that's, you know, overly egregious, but the other issues do need to be, you know, at least considered.
So as far as, I mean, like, like you had mentioned, the, the odors and the noise, what is Groveland's quiet hours? Do you guys have quiet hours? I mean, we want to be respectful of all the neighbors and everything. And if we were to use, you know, air tools, it's very limited. We have a lot of Milwaukee stuff and battery operated.
Everything's electric that we have.
It's not so much like it used to be with the compressor running constantly and things like that. It's, it's all battery operated now. And if it was, say, like a grinder or saw, something like that, I wouldn't be doing that late at night. And you know, the same as I wouldn't be doing it at my house, you know, very respectful of the neighbors. And that's the number one concern with this, this whole property and the situation and everything like that. Odors, I mean, if we were to use like a spray paint or something like that, I mean, that's pretty containable. It's not like we'd be painting a vehicle in there and having a filtration system or something like that, you know? Blowing, blowing, yeah, odors out of the building, you know?
Yeah, my bigger concern was like Bondo, you know, full body work, full paint jobs, those type of things where it, it pretty much stinks up the neighborhood.
It's not our specialty anyways.
Nobody wants to smell that.
So I'm actually wondering if Rebecca would be willing to read off the requirements for a variance so that we can address each of the issues one at a time? Would you be willing to do that, Rebecca? You have a handy?
Yes, I do. So under section 14.7 of the zoning bylaw, a variance from the terms of this bylaw may be granted only where the board of appeals specifically finds that one, owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography, but not size of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner. To the petitioner. And two, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this bylaw. And three, failure to establish any of the standards shall constitute grounds to deny a petition for a variance. A variance may not be granted if the circumstance is creating the hardship was self-created. The loss of the protection afforded a non-conforming use under the provisions of this bylaw is not a substantial hardship justifying the grant of a variance.
So basically, what, why I had Rebecca read that is because those are the conditions that we as a board need to look at when we look at an application and we say, okay, does it check any of those boxes, right? And then that's how we can move forward or deny, right? So we have to go basically by the book. Like we don't make the rules, the rules are already written. We just sit here and interpret them like, you know? So have you guys looked at the variance criteria at all?
As far as variances, no, I don't believe so.
Okay, so so the first, so maybe we could just do them one by one and then you guys can elaborate or add anything that you like. So the first one, let's start with that is owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography, but not size of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner. So basically what they're asking is do, does the land have any issues that apply to any of the, in that category at all? That you've looked at?
As far as like the, the soil in the back or just the, the general area of the building?
Basically, I think what we need to get at is there a hardship that would require a variance? So and I think that's what the board needs to kind of figure out is, is there a hardship? And if there is a hardship, what is it? And the second thing is if the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially segregate, derogating from the intent or the purpose of this bylaw. So I think that's what also the board needs to sort of look at. I just wanted to be upfront with you guys to tell you like, what's the criteria we have to look at in order to grant or not grant, right? So then the third one, failure to establish any and all standards shall continue grounds to deny or petition for a variance. A variance may not be granted if the circumstance creating the hardship is self-created. The loss of the protection afforded a non-conforming use under the provisions of this bylaw is not a substantial hardship justifying the grant of the variance. So I think what we need to do as a board, unless we have further comment, but is try to figure out if those standards have been met. So I'd like to ask if there are any other comments from the public. I see there's other folks on the meeting tonight. Unless the board has any further questions on the application, you guys, Chris, you have any further questions at this point?
I mean, so I mean, that's why I just want to be clear that you guys have no intent to store any hazardous material or anything like that as part of the your functionality that you're going to be doing on the property?
No, nothing.
So, so nothing flammable, nothing, nothing combustible, nothing?
If it was, if it was, I mean, not, not gallons of gas, no, nothing like, nothing like that. I mean, if, and if it is.
Well, I mean, we all know it doesn't, it doesn't need necessarily be gallons. It can be a wet rag really that catches, right? So, so again, I mean, that's what, that we're concerned is they'll or at least my concern is that you'd be working on something, doing something, you wipe up a spill or anything with a rag, toss it to the side because you're all done, lock up, leave for the day, and then, and then it ignites when you're not there.
Right. So like you were saying, we could get, we could take it off of the property or get a hazardous barrel that, like a combustible barrel. The only thing might be like a 12 ounce can of spray paint stored there, but even that, we don't need to keep there. Just pick something up as we need it. And really don't even have to paint in there. I can do things like that at home.
I mean, it's very similar to what you'd have at your, your personal house, your personal garage. I mean, what, what would you feel comfortable putting in your, your own home? It's kind of the same exact thing as what we'd be doing down there. As far as you don't want to cause any damage to your house, you don't want to cause any damage to the garage. So the precautions will be met. And like I did say about the flammable cabinet, if we did put paint in there or if we put oil, I don't know if you have to put really oil in there, but if it was new oil, it'd just be jugs. Just sealed jugs that you, you buy at the store and just put them on a shelf or something like that to be used in the future. But I mean, like Timmy said about maybe just a flame proof kind of waste, maybe like a 55 gallon drum that has a sealed lid on there or just to get rid of it in general. We do have like the absorbent sand and stuff like that. So if there was a spill, you could put that down. We have the pig mats that just absorb oil and stuff like that. And then, you know, just get rid of them properly.
Yeah, and again, nothing, it's not something we can't get past, but I just want to make sure you guys are thinking about what to do. So.
Yeah. We don't like, we don't like to leave a messy shop. So I wouldn't leave oil on the ground or anything like that. It just gets messy and all kinds of issues from there. Nice and clean, always.
And Kathy, is it Leah? Can I just have a comment for the various?
Okay.
Okay, so this site have very difficult, I mean, topology and the ship and it's created involuntarily by the state taken. And the new bridge, I mean, it benefits the whole town, I mean, but to make the ship of this loss very difficult. And I have to fall in the board, that means go through all the process and it's already cost me over $75,000 for engineering work. And all the engineering and the time engineering already, I mean, so review and sign off for the project. And so this, this use is the best for everybody. I mean, so I would like to work with town and to make it better for everyone. So I mean, their use is not affect anybody. I mean, the site already independent for over 11 months to, to learning the operation. I mean, at the back of the site, there's a town lots on the back side, people, the town of Groveland people drop off a donation close over there. So to make it set, the overall improvement will be much better and for everybody, I mean, so let's work together to make sets better, move forward. I mean, this is a history leave us like this. I mean, so we have to try and work together and make it better.
Thank you. I, we, I just wanted someone to state that. That's what I needed to, someone to state that. So thank you.
Thank you.
John, do you have any questions? No. I can't hear you, but you said no, I could, I saw your mouth, no. So.
Kathy, Kathy, this is, this is Brian Canal who's representing the butter Groveland Square LLC, the owner of 291 and 293 Main Street. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Yeah, and I, I've met both these gentlemen early on, I think, when they were kind of trying to get the place shipshape before moving in. Obviously, this, this has gone a different way where I, I think we who just spoke had them move in ahead of doing any of this process. And then obviously it got shut down and here we are. My, my chief My, my chief concerns, uh, are the fact that our property is mixed-use, right? Which is commercial, commercial and residential, so what, uh, I think it was Sam who brought up, you know, kind of the smell, uh, noise, all of those things. It sounded like, uh, were, were addressed, or at least discussed on there. Uh, as, as far as hardship or financial hardship on the applicant, the applicants, I don't think have really met or mentioned that this is a willingness that they're looking to move into a, a former garage that I thought was excluded as a use. Um, I know that you guys are trying to structure it in such a way. I know that there are other areas, there are other garages, I know there's a garage right over the bridge, uh, behind Marcel's shop, that I, I think they rent that out for, um, you know, pe- people that are redoing motorcycles, redoing, um, different vehicles and such, uh, so there, there's obviously other options, so it is kind of a willful, um, and not really, uh, I, I guess a self-induced hardship, if you will, for the applicant, maybe not for the owner of the property, but the owner of the property isn't the applicant, and I think we've, we've already gone down that path. But I just wanted to make note that, you know, we, we wouldn't really be in support of adding in a, a body shop or mechanic shop into something that's no longer, um, zoned for that type of stuff. I recognize that this is a hobbyist, um, versus a profession. Um, but sometimes professions and commercial uses are born out of entrepreneurial, you know, hobby type, type, uh, efforts, and I'm not saying that that's what's going to happen there, but that could happen, and, and, you know, whatever the decision, that, that would be somehow enforceable, um, that it's not going to become, uh, you know, commercial use. Um, one of the last things, I guess, I would just mention is, I, I did see at the time, there was, you know, like a boat stored out back, I, I know that recently at an Elm Square Committee meeting, Michael Dempsey, if he is still on, had mentioned, uh, to the owner that the, the town did have some interest in to try to get, I guess, access to the river and parking and a number of other things, you know, born into kind of tearing the building down. I don't know where that conversation went with the owner or not, but, uh, I just figured I'd just table that, because I think that was something that Michael Dempsey had talked about. So, i- i- if you guys do approve or that does move forward in some way, um, I would probably make sure that these guys are able to protect themselves against, um, you know, some sort of short term or month to month or something like that, so they're not, uh, locked into something. But that, that's, that's basically our two cents from, from next door, you know, being the direct to butter.
Thank you, Brian.
Kathy?
Yes.
Hi, uh, it's Mike Dempsey.
Hi, Mike.
I, I just, um, wanted to add that, uh, I think it's sad that, uh, for this site, where, uh, many, many hundreds of thousands of dollars were spent by the, Getty Company to clean the site up from, uh, its use, uh, prior use as a gas station, car repair site. Uh, and now the site is clean and has a clean bill of health from all those years that, uh, we're looking at putting another, uh, car-related, uh, business or tenant right back in there. And, and that's not to say, uh, that, uh, these particular tenants are, uh, going to do anything uh, to, uh, contaminate the site, but, uh, to me, I, I, again, I just see it being sad that that's all that we can put in there, it's the same thing that it's been used for in the past and cleaned up.
I mean, it's not necessarily the same as what it used to be, we're not exactly like, say, a Jiffy Lube, where it's going to be constant flow of oil changes and fluids. It's more just of kind of a dried storage and tool storage. Yes, there will be vehicles in there, but it's not like it's a constant, you know, hazardous materials being changed, or, um, where they had, I think, the lift in the floor, the, the hydraulic lift that was in there, and the, um, the floor drains have been filled with cement. So it's not like we could, anything could really get into the concrete floors that are there, it's a concrete pad inside. As far as outside goes, if you'd rather, you know, like Brian had said, there was a boat, I did have my boat back there for about a week, and then I took it out of there. Um, if that's something where you guys would rather not see a vehicle back there because of the river, um, that's perfectly fine, I understand that. Um, I don't want to cause any, you know, damages to that or concern with that. But I mean, there are houses along the river also, that I'm sure have maybe boats or storage, stuff like that, um, I don't know what they really put back there, but I know there are docks back there. So, I don't know what people do with their boats, but, um, if you guys want to keep the boats out of there, that's, it's completely fine. But yeah, I don't, I know the property was cleaned and everything, I saw that. Yeah. Um, Brian, I did, you know, it was nice talking to you that time, you did say that your, your wife had an older Mustang. It's kind of looking forward to seeing that sometime, if she wants to swing that by.
Yeah, well, it'll have to be a day I'm commuting from Maine, we moved it up there, so it's got a main tag on it, but, uh, yeah, yeah, if, if, if you're there, happy to connect, sorry, I got four-year-olds in the background here, I'll mute myself.
Okay, so, um, uh, is there anyone else on the call that would like to add any comments, questions?
And, uh, Cecilia, I just want to add one more comment, Kathy, I mean, so, so this site is allowed by the residential and the business, but their use is residential use, just like, I mean, everybody house, you have the house over there, you have the garage over there, so everybody can walk in their garage, I mean, for their own vehicle, I mean, so. It's basically, it's residential use, it's not business, they don't have any businesses, they just residential use. So everybody have their garage at their own, own house, that means they're walking on the car in, in their garage, same thing.
Yeah, and as far as, like, uh, it was mentioned about noise and everything, um, that there was concern with that, I mean, I don't know if you, I'm sure you guys have all been in the area, but, um, it's kind of, you can lose track of how many motorcycles and people speed over the bridge and get on it, and how loud it is over there, so I'm not sure really how much noise we would be really causing over there. I mean, the occasional power tool or saw, maybe. But I mean, if there was ever an issue, you know, let us know to be aware, and we can change that. That's why I had asked in the beginning about, you know, if there was any quiet hours with Groveland, um, so we can kind of work around that, if we were to, you know, have something where we needed to do something, and it could just wait till the next day, or something like that, if it's something with a Sunday, you know, to keep quiet earlier. Just, you know, stuff like that, I, I just want to make it work for everybody, that it's, it's convenient and works out. Um, I don't want to step on anybody's toes or anything like that, or make anybody angry about, you know, having something going, or, you know, saw or power tool going, it's, we can keep quiet.
And like Sam said too, I mean, we'd be willing, well, I mean, obviously, you guys would are gonna want to do a random visit to make sure we're not doing anything we're not supposed to. And I'm completely fine with that, I mean, not that you have to, but just to make sure we're not going to be doing anything that we're not supposed to be, and random visits, you know, everything will check out.
Well, and if you don't have any cars, it's not like you're going to be changing the oil every week.
But, yeah.
I mean, if you are, then that would constitute something else, I would think.
Yeah.
That you're in business.
You know, yeah, we can't do a million oil changes, I mean, I do mine every three thousand, so, it's not like you're gonna be pulling, like I said, it's not anywhere close to like a Jiffy Lube, where we're gonna just be pulling cars in and out of there constantly, and having, you know, an abundance of oil and hazardous waste to get rid of. It's not like that, it's, it'd be like your five, five quart jug of oil, to change the oil, or some antifreeze or something like that, but, you know, it's all, that's all stuff that the local parts dealers or anybody that sells it needs to take back, so it just gets dropped off right back there. But, that's, that's, yeah. It's gonna be treated just like a, it's gonna be the same as a residential house garage, that's really it. I mean, I want to see the building being obviously used, it seems like when we were there, the people that would walk by would just compliment us and tell us how great it is to see somebody in there, it'd kind of poke their heads in and look around and see what was going on, I mean, they got a lot of compliments with the truck being out there for the day.
Us, boy, yeah.
So, people told me it would be kind of cool to maybe in the future have like an antique car meet down there, get maybe a couple of food trucks or something like that, but, you know, just to kind of give something to the community. I know like Carter's Ice Cream or something brings in the, uh, I forget what group it is, but a couple Hot Rods and everything go down there and they meet up.
Yeah, like a Sunday or something, not during business hours, or, you know, Sunday afternoon, when everything, when the parking isn't at max capacity.
Uh, I just have a question for Sam, actually, are there, are there any official quiet hours in Groveland? Have there ever been anything?
Yep, if you look under the use table, it gives the hours of operation for businesses. Um, if the board chose to, they can certainly amend those further.
Okay, but there's no, um, specific quiet, specifically called like quiet hours in Groveland? Let's say for residential neighborhoods even?
Not really, it comes down to disturbing the peace, if, you know, you got your stereo on at two AM, call the cops and they'll shut you down. Uh, same thing goes there.
Well, I didn't know if there were any official rules about, you know, like leaf blowers at six AM, that kind of thing. Um, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything like that, that.
Yeah.
And because it's not a business, that's why I'm asking, because it's not technically a business, so.
Right, although it would be used in a residential manner, it would still be in the business zone and subject to their regulations. So it would be enforced as a business, um, despite how it was being used.
Agreed, I was just sort of, um, thinking about area residents and that kind of thing, if, you know, if there was some sort of power tool going. But I'll tell you that you probably will hear from the neighbors, if you are doing that at six AM, they probably will not like that, and you will be probably be, but.
We would not like it at all. This is, you know, as a neighbor coming to this meeting, you know, my initial, um, concern was it being an eyesore, uh, you know, when you said personal equipment that you would leave out there, or is it going to be, you know, landscaping trucks and all kinds of junk like that? Doesn't sound like that's what you have in mind, um, or anything like that. But now you're all bringing things to light, you know, smells and sounds and all that stuff. But having said that, it does seem like a pretty low-impact, you know, situation. I know there have been other suggestions of what to put in there that sounded like would not be a good fit there at all. Um, restaurants that would seat ninety-some-odd people or something like that, just sounded like a, would, would be a train wreck down there, but, um, so this does sound like a low-impact proposition. But, you know, is there any remedy, once you've said it's okay to do this, if it turns out not to be that? You know, if you, it does create an eyesore, or there is a lot of noise coming out of there, or anything like that, you know, that's what worries me.
Excuse me, would you mind stating your name for the, for the record?
Uh, my name is Sharon Johansson, I live at two eighty-one Main Street. So it would be like two houses down from that.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I think the applicant.
As far as the, uh, eyesore goes, I mean, leaving the building vacant for however long it's been, I mean, the first thing we did when we went in there was just clean up the appearance of the outside. We, we weed whacked all the weeds out of the front, we pulled all the weeds out, we, we, uh, cleaned up the whole entire backyard, which is just like a jungle of the bamboo things and, uh.
Yeah, all before we even opened the door.
Yeah.
We took care of all that first.
As far as the appearance goes, we want to keep up with that, that was kind of point of tinting the windows black, just so people, you know, for our privacy also, for whatever's inside, it's just so people can't see, but we did leave the top row of the windows open. Um, is visible, I guess, from the bridge, also, if like, say, Sam had to get in or kind of poke around, or there was a comment about being able to see inside, if you do stand up on the bridge, I believe you can see inside. Um, just because we didn't, one for sunlight, and mainly for sunlight, but, um.
And nobody wants to be looking at, you know, random things in a building all over the place. Or walking around doing things, just wanted to keep.
Keeps people from stealing your stuff, if they see, you know, a fifty-five Chevy, they might be tempted.
Yeah, yeah, there will be, we will have cameras and stuff like that up, so, just for the, the privacy and, you know, theft, cautions with theft, and the tools and stuff like that being in there. So, we want to just, you know, the appearance-wise, it's, we don't want it to look like an eyesore.
Yeah, we want it to look good just as much as anybody else, and it isn't a center part of town, pretty much, so.
Yeah.
Just clean it up.
Rather not have a rundown building, right, as you're, you know, right in the spotlight, through the intersection, so.
Well, and I'm sure you can appreciate, that's why everyone in town is interested in what's going on there. Because it is the center of town, and we do, you know, um, we do want it to look nice, and we want it to present well, and, you know, so, that's why you're getting probably some pushback, because it is probably the most visible site in all of town. So, um, but, they, is there anyone else on the meeting who would like to add any comment, public comment? I'll take that as a no.
If we.
Go ahead, John, I'm sorry.
Because it's in a business district, can we set some of the hours? Even though it's just going to be used for storage, that way it would protect some of the neighbors if, if this thing gets voted through.
Well, I think that's what, I think that's what Sam was saying, is that, yeah, that, um, there are set business hours basically for the district, but, um, if we're doing a special, uh, I'm sorry, if we're doing a variance, then we can sort of say what those would be, like, we can change those, just like we would with any other business. Um, you know, we wouldn't want other, you know, like auto body shops, that kind of thing, operating at eleven PM, like, that's just not, we, we can do that in town regardless, so, um, I don't think that's an issue. So, I think what I would like to do is to close the public portion of the hearing, and maybe just have the board deliberate and figure out how we'd like to move forward. John, Chris, do you have any comments, suggestions? Any way you're leaning?
Uh, I mean, honestly, I'm, as long as they, they're taking precautions on their disposable combustibles, that kind of stuff, as long as, in the, you know, the intention is not to be commercial in any way, and all the vehicles and tools and whatnot are, are indoors, I'm, I tend to be okay with things.
I just don't want it to, you know, the outside storage, I think, I don't think I'd, I'd be happy seeing that, and if they, you know, if they just want to store their tools and work on a car, whatever, every now and then, that doesn't bother me too much, I think it's low-impact.
Agreed.
I just don't want the outside to, to start looking like a hovel or a, you know.
Something like that. I wouldn't want it in the front of my driveway with a bunch of stuff torn apart, anything that's going to be worked on will be inside the garage.
Yep.
So.
Sam, is there anything else that, uh, you can think of that you want to see?
No, the only thing I would say is just, you know, keep in mind, one, it, it's a variance we're looking at, so they need to meet that criteria. Two, if you do condition it, um, you know, just make sure we get what we need in there, and I would also suggest that this decision would go, uh, you, you know, only for these occupants, and any, any change in occupants or, or, you know, uh, use would come back before the board. But, other than that, um, you know, I'm good.
Is this anything we need to have Town Council look at or anything, make sure we're doing this right?
Um, you know, it's, it's.
It's, it's a. It's difficult because, you know, we, we have an application for something that's a good use. Um, it's low impact, it, it's reasonable. But on the other hand, we have to meet the criteria that is set in the law. So if we can meet the criteria and get a good use out of it, awesome, and if we can't, um. You know, then so be it. Um, my, like I said before, my decision is easy. Our bylaw says no, cuz it's not on the list, so that's a pretty. You know, nice out for me to be able to just say, yeah, you know, I gotta tell you no and move it forward. Um, like I said at the beginning of the meeting, you guys are the ones with the tough decision to make, um. You know, and uh, you know, I, I think I did speak earlier about conditioning it to go with these folks. That's for special permit, which this feels like, but it is a variance, so that does run with the land, not with the uh, with the applicant, so just to correct myself. But um. Other than that, if you guys don't need me, I'll let you do your thing and I'm gonna go sit on my couch and have a glass of whiskey.
Do it.
No.
Absolutely.
All right, totally jealous, but okay, have a great night. Thanks, Sam.
Have a good one.
Make all the setbacks, Kath.
Thank you.
What?
Does it make all the setbacks and everything? I don't, I wanna make sure we're not okay in something forever on that. Um. The variance, does it have anything to do with the setbacks or anything? Side lot, back setbacks, are we all okay on that?
Well, I think the. And Rebecca can correct me if I'm wrong, cuz she's like the super guru here, but. Um. If we grant a variance, then it is specific to what we grant, not. Cuz if you did a setback variance, you'd have to sit specifically state that. And they're not requesting that.
Right, they're only visually a variance on the use, so.
Correct. So.
And I think that goes back to what Sam was saying about a variance running with the land, because if you have a house and it doesn't meet the side setback and you receive a variance, the variance is for the land, it's not necessarily for the owner, so if you go to sell that house, you don't have to worry about getting another variance for not meeting the dimensional setback, so it runs with the land.
That's kind of what I was asking. I, I wanna make sure we don't know, okay, this. For that reason, and then, you know, trying to do the right thing and wind up. Opening ourselves up to something else. Down the road.
Well, my thoughts on that are if. If the board was so inclined to grant such a variance that it would have conditions in which. That, so for example, um. I, just some of the things we were talking about, you know, that it wouldn't be a commercial automotive use, or. Um, we set the hours of operation or inspections or, or whatever it is that we set as a condition. Um, those conditions would also run with the land. So that if there was another, let's say, personal storage use or personal automotive use, like what is being described. That it would also be set to those same conditions. So. You would basically be granting the use. But it would still have that same condition, so you know, you couldn't. Uh, then now have another person come in and not abide by the same conditions, cuz that would be enforceable by Sam. You know, as a violation. So. My suggestion would be is that if you, if we are leaning that way, that we make the conditions. Um, pretty straightforward and pretty succinct, so that. It does stand the test of time, basically, so when. These gentlemen decide that, you know, they wanna retire and sell their stuff and move on, that somebody else might be able to come in, but they would definitely have to abide by the same exact, so. Let's just make sure that the conditions are. Specific to what we're. Inclined to do. That's all.
So we could make it worded so that it's for use only, we're not. Accepting, you know, anything else other than use.
Basically. That's what you, you know, cuz this is really, it goes with the application, so. The applicant is not asking for uh, any setbacks or anything like that, so none of that would be granted through a variance. It would only be. What it is they're, they're asking for, which is the use. And then we could. Condition it. Based on our conversation here this evening, you know. So. Um, so I'm, I'm getting from the board that you guys are sort of leaning towards doing some sort of approval with conditions. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Kristen, John?
Yeah.
Okay, so if that's the case, uh, what type of conditions would you like to see? I know we've sort of briefly talked about them, but maybe we could sort of just list them and. Hammer them out.
All right, well, I think, you know, specified, you know, for non-commercial use. Um, that, that the. Ve- vehicles of any type and tools of any type are, are stored indoors, obviously aside from the ones they drive to the property. Um. If, if, and again, that, and that precautions are, are taken for any combustible materials. And I, I think that's all I got as far as what I would wanna see in there.
I was far as putting um, like something in the back, the backyard over there. Um. Would say like a, what do you have for a trailer?
Oh, an enclosed trailer.
An enclosed trailer. Would that be an issue, parking that in the rear of the building?
Like tucked close to the building?
I think you're better off if you leave the outside of the building clear other than your cars when you're there.
Yeah, okay.
Well, because in the back is where the real conservation issues are.
Right.
So I think that's where you're gonna run into trouble, so I think that's why. Um. We were sort of talking about the, no, like exterior storage, because that's where your biggest. Liability would be, you know, if something leaked or anything like, it's just not a good idea. So. Um, okay, so. John, did you have any that you'd like to add?
Uh, no, I think if, if they look at the. The mass CMRs, they can find out how much of any combustible or flammable material that they can put in a home, in a garage. Isn't much. So um, they can look that up. Under the fire codes. Uh, and it'll tell them, believe me, it's not a lot, so. Just beware of that.
Little, little to none.
Yeah.
Just go by that, yeah, just play it safe.
Yep.
Okay, so there are a couple of things I would be. Wanting to add to it as well, so um. So go- going back to the flammable substance or oil storage, um. I would not wanna see any type of flammable substance stored on the property at all. Um. And then, but if you did, let's say, have a paint cabinet, if you had, you know, spray paint or whatever, I. I think it definitely does incidental stuff, just like what John was saying, the small items that you are allowed, but. Um, that it should be in a cabinet like you described. Um. Also, I'd want to maybe have a conversation with Chris and John about what you would propose for ours. At the location. What do you guys think?
Well, and I would ask the guys, too, you're not gonna be doing a lot of night work because you don't wanna make noise in the neighborhood, correct?
No.
Mostly it's gonna be during the day, like eight to like six or eight to five or six or something like that.
Probably, I mean, we both, we both work, so I mean, if we were to go up on like a weekend or something like that, again, as far as the noise goes. Um, we're respectful of the neighbors and everything like we would at our houses, so. Um, we don't want to cause any issues with anything like that, so it's like, we're not gonna go. Will, will we be up there? Say, I can't say that maybe we won't be there till like eight or nine o'clock one night, but no, it wouldn't be. Grinding away or using like an air tool or something like that. If it's just something like doing something with the upholstery or. You know, buttoning something up on a vehicle or a motorcycle, it's not, you know, making any noise. Um.
So if we could have like a, a separate time for both noise and just regular occupancy.
If, all right, so what do you propose for occupancy? What, what would your proposal be for occupancy times?
Um, I, I really can't say, I mean, I don't know, like you guys had said, this really not, there's not a, like a set time, is there for business?
Well.
There is a timeframe with the, with the zone, right?
What is, it's like, so for like a business, if like, um. Not so much like a business, cuz I don't wanna say like five or six o'clock and have it, us not be able to get access to the building. And even if we aren't gonna make noise, but. It's not like, say, like ten, ten o'clock, I, I think maybe some towns are.
Like the sub shop used to be open till like nine.
Nine, yes.
Groveland, you know, it's a sleepy town.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Noise carries at night, fellas. That's the one thing I want you to be aware of.
Right, we did notice that being in there, like I brought up before about the exhaust, just people. Flying over the bridge or whatever, going from Haverhill to Groveland, you know, everybody gets on it right on that bridge. And it's just a constant, especially, I mean, with summer, it was the motorcycles and everything like that. Like uh, Brian had said, there, there is an actual little motorcycle shop across the way. Um, I am friends with them. But um, not something that I would wanna get into. Just cuz I'm looking for personal quiet, you know, have our own stuff, not be a bunch of other people, not, not being able to control what they're doing. You know.
Plus, the noise travels over the river too, right? That's what hap- uh, you, they could hear you in Lawrence if you're really, you know, because it just, it goes right up that river, so. I think that, so. Don, to answer your question, as far as what the um. The business hours are in that district is seven AM to ten PM, those are normal operating hours. However. Um, so we could do something like that, but then also have uh, noise hours, we could.
I respect kind of noise, uh, yeah.
I mean, I would definitely say like with the noise, I mean, come. It, it is definitely different come winter versus summer, because you know, it, it's lighter later, you may be there, but again, I. If people are active and stuff like that and they're out and about. I feel like the noise is a little bit different, but I'm not gonna say, I, I mean, I definitely wouldn't go again, like. Pounding away at like an air hammer at nine o'clock at night. Because. I want people coming down there.
Right, so it's something that we could pick up the next day, but still stay in there with the lights on, just.
Yeah.
Either cleaning up, say, after those hours where we can't make noise, you know, cleaning up, but still be able to be in the building and keep the lights on.
Right.
And.
I mean, realistically, I'd say you said like ten o'clock is kind of the typical business hours, I mean. I'm getting older now, I, I don't really wanna be in the garage until, you know. One o'clock in the morning anymore, I just wanna, it's like, come, come about eight o'clock, I'm, I'm basically. Good to go at max, but.
So Chris and John, what, what would you propose for uh? Noise hours?
Um.
You know, I don't know what the state says about that.
Yeah, I, like, like you said, I know some towns have ordinance as about like, you know, noise for like construction and stuff like that, but I mean. Honestly, as far as, I think as far as I'm concerned, as long as they do within the business hours and then obviously the neighbors have a right to. Submit a complaint if, if they think it's out of, out of line, but I think if they're within the business hours with the zone, I think. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, and I think, fellas, you're gonna have to use your heads and, you know, don't use your uh, impact guns and stuff at nine o'clock at night, you know. Um, if you're working and you drop a muffler or something, who cares if that happens? You know what I'm saying? Incidental noise happens. But, you know, I just. Think of the neighbors, that's all.
Yeah, it comes down to just being respectful of the neighbors and trying to avoid that whole phone call that someone has to make about noise being made. And I don't want fingers pointed at us because of something and it's like, you know, I. I, I don't want that. I wanna just be low, under the radar, that's what we want, just be quiet, respectful of everybody in the area and just be, be able to make the space work, just to finally. I guess, put an end to everybody pulling attention to it and trying to get in there and use it for all different ideas. I feel like our use. Maybe like the best one, just for just the low, low volume and. Just us two using it in and out of there, so.
Definitely appreciative of, either the opportunity to have somewhere warm to just keep something or work on something. And I wouldn't wanna ruin it over.
But I can't promise I'm warm.
Well, so. But Chris and John, I think we do need to set some noise hours only because. Um, this does follow the land, okay, so if the next, so this is sort of what we were talking about, right? What? What will survive if these gentlemen decide to move on? So I do think that it's important to put some sort of noise hours so that we don't have the next person. Who says, hey, I can make noise till ten PM, that's what this says. So. I think we need to put some sort of parameter on it. Um. I'd be, I'd be willing to, let's say, propose like. I don't know, like eight to eight? Or something like that?
Or, that's, that's very reasonable. I think the eight o'clock with, you know, power tools and stuff, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't wanna make noise after that really anyway. Especially even with doors shut, winter time, I mean, it's. It's kind of. I'd say kind of common sense for us not to do it. Just for, out of respect for the surrounding neighbors.
Yeah, so I, I think the only exception I would think would be maybe on a weekend morning, you know, maybe we do like nine AM on weekend mornings, cuz.
Yeah.
What, what do you got? John, Chris and John, what do you think of that?
Yeah.
Right.
All right, so, um, so like eight AM to eight PM, Monday through Friday. And then, um. Weekends, like nine AM to. Eight PM, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Weekends. Okay, um. Moving on, okay, so. The other thing is uh, periodic inspections. I was gonna propose maybe uh, an inspection one time per year by Sam. Be written into the condition, so that he could just pop in, see what's happening, make sure that, you know, everything's being, um. That the conditions are being abided by, by the applicant.
Along with any other time he feels like dropping by.
He's welcome to come by, hence my.
All right, so maybe I'll just put, you know, periodic inspections by the building inspector, um.
Random.
Right, okay, there you go, so. Random inspections. Permitted. By the zoning. Enforcement. Um. Yeah, and the, okay, I think, I think that has everything I was looking for. The only thing, um. We have to determine is the criteria for the variance, so. I know we sort of glossed over it, but I do think we need to um. Determine whether this is. A substantial hardship, and I, and I do believe that this. Land. Does have a hardship in the fact that it can't fit many other things, honestly, um, obviously, we have. Debated that ad nauseam. As to certain things that just don't fit there, because of parking, because of the taking, because it just has. The land has a lot of issues, and I do believe that that. In my opinion, I don't know about Chris and John, but. It does sort of fit that criteria as far as I'm concerned.
I would agree with that, definitely.
Okay.
Uh, the second one would be uh. That it would not be a substantial detriment to the public good.
Yeah, like I said, I think we've, we, we all agree that this is. Low, very low impact, so.
And I think having somebody in there would be good, it's. The building's not gonna get wrecked. You know, if it stays weak for too long, it's not gonna be a good thing.
So I don't mean to interrupt the board, but in looking further into the actual requirements for variance. Um, I did look specifically at the bylaw and I do believe that the board may have um. An issue with the application because under section D, it specifically states that the Board of Appeal shall not hear, decide, or grant. Use variances from the provisions of this bylaw, and therefore, before you tonight is a variance for the use. So I believe based upon what I just read from the zoning bylaw, the board would not be able to grant. A variance for use, at least not as I'm reading it. Unless the board disagrees or would like to look at that more closely.
Is that something that we, we could get Rebecca, some clarification from town council?
Um, I, I, we could certainly do that, but I am um, of a very um. Strong opinion that I, it, it specifically says that you cannot grant a variance for a use. But we can certainly get town council to confirm that.
Well, if that's the case, before we vote, we better get a clarification on it before we do something that's illegal.
Right.
Or against the town rules.
Yeah, I tend to agree. We probably should consult with them, because there are some maybe different options that might exist, so.
Cause then the other thing to just take into consideration is just above that particular section, it specifically states that the board may not impose conditions, safeguards, or limitations based upon the continued ownership of the land or structured by the petitioner or by the owner. So I guess what I was just saying is that I I think that there's some confusion about the differences of a special permit and a variance. And a special permit offers the board a lot more flexibility in terms of what they're granting. Whereas a variance is very straightforward and meeting that criteria that we laid out earlier this evening about the soil condition, shape, topography, etc. So while it it was it was deemed uh not allowed use by the building commissioner, and therefore, the letter stated the denial was that he, the only way he could go forward was with a variance. It technically shouldn't probably have not been a variance, just based upon the fact that that specific section does not allow for use variances. So maybe like Kathy said, it it should have been a special permit and not a variance. Um, I'm not sure whether or not you could go through a special permit process when one hasn't been laid out before you, like if we go through a process for you know, a restaurant use, it was a a use allowed by a special permit. So a special permit would apply, but where the use isn't called out, I don't necessarily see how it could fall under a special permit process. Again, it would go back to whether or not it it would, it would be, I guess, maybe a finding and not necessarily, you know, I'm not, so I guess as I ramble, I would agree that there maybe should be some further clarification by town council as to whether or not the board should be voting on this particular matter in this particular fashion.
Okay, that sounds, does that sound like the thing we should do? Yeah.
I'm thinking.
Yeah, I'm looking through this, it does say special permit all over.
Well, this is why I was confused in the beginning, because the actual application comes over as a special permit under section five, right? So then Sam kept saying it was a variance, so I was like, okay, well, maybe we can do it that way, but I, I thought it was a special permit, so that was sort of how I came into this, thinking that it was more of a special permit type situation.
Ri- right, and and the application does specify a special permit under section five of zoning by law.
Right, so when I did my review earlier, I was thinking, okay, that's, so that's sort of the section I was sort of concentrating on. So. I do think, go, go ahead.
So, because I put it through as a special use application, how, now how does it get changed into being a variance?
Well, this is, this is what we're debating. It's just a question of like how, how we go about it. It's like a procedural thing, so. I think we just need to maybe take, oh, I don't know, a little bit of time just to ask town council exactly how we would move forward with it, if there is a way to move forward with it, what what the actual legal criteria is and how we, how we write it up, basically, so.
I just want to make sure that we do know the difference, though. A a special permit needs to be assigned a special permit. So you can't just like, there's special permits that you need to apply for that are granted special permits. That there, I don't know, I think that the question is to, does this, this doesn't meet a special permit type situation, because there's no special permit that allows for it, like a special permit for uh store more, uh, special permit for the Aquaford Protection District, a special permit for parking, there's these special permits that are called out in the bylaw. You just don't issue a a special permit versus a variance. There there has to be a a mechanism which the special permit is applied for. So while the application said special permit, the building commissioner's letter, which denies the application and kicks it over to the zoning board of appeals for this process, denied it on the basis that they would be required to 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 do a variance. So even if the application states special permit, it's still the application that came from the the confirmation from the zoning enforcement officer being the building commissioner that would start and initiate that process.
So I guess the question I need to find out from the lawyer that if our hands are tied because we can't grant a variance for use according to section D.
So I can ask town council, one, that question, which I'm very confident that we cannot allow for use variances. And then also whether or not it should have been handled under a separate filing as a special permit, but specifically in what fashion, since it's not a use that's listed in the table that would allow for a special permit to be filed. So if it's not an allowed use and it doesn't signify that a special permit would be required, what other mechanism could you go about other than granting a use variance? So I really think we answer our question there, but at the same time, I can certainly make that question and put that out to town council and ask for an opinion in writing.
I should just get an opinion in writing.
From town council, Kath?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just so we can
Move one way.
Right, so we have a definite answer.
How, how long does that take to do? Just to get an idea?
I don't know, I think it depends on town council availability. Rebecca might be able to answer that a little bit better. I think we just need a quick clarification.
I'm hopeful that they can turn it around quickly. I think it's fairly straightforward, but at the same time, I I can't say with any certainty.
Can we ask them, Kath, to make the determination on the special use and the variance? Can we get an answer to both? Then we know what we're doing as far as we don't want to set a bad precedent. And we don't want to do it by mistake, I guess.
Rebecca, can, can you ask them to do those two items?
Yes, I certainly can, and I can do that this evening, hopefully, and let them know that there is a time sensitivity to the matter.
As soon as we get that back, I think we could probably, um, we do have another meeting set up for November eighth, uh, hold on. November eighteenth. For another matter. But if we could get a determination prior to then, I think, but I don't know if that's gonna be enough time, Rebecca, because you have to notice it, right?
What do you mean, notice it? I'm sorry.
So, so let's say, um, this was gonna be, let's say, back on the agenda for November eighteenth. You know, if we had, if we got a determination from town council. Wouldn't we have to put it in the note, the meeting notice?
About butters and rices and stuff like that?
No, well, technically, the application is open right now, so you can continue it to the next meeting, and then based upon that determination, you'll either have to deny the application because you you don't have the ability to grant a use variance, and that's the only option, or two, that maybe there is some type of special permit, or maybe it is a finding instead of a special permit, and then maybe um, I'll also pose a question to town council as to whether or not that would require renotice of the public hearing, which would then go out again. So I I would say that you're safe for the next meeting. It's the um, what that outcome of that meeting will really decipher how we move forward in terms of whether or not renoticing and noticing requirements.
So I I think what I was trying to figure out is when do you have to post the agenda?
Oh, for the, the, I only need forty-eight hours per Massachusetts general law, so I usually post it the Thursday prior to the meeting. So I would just need to know next, by next Thursday, and then I can put it, I mean, we so do you, I I mean, do you mean just to get on the agenda, or do you mean whether or not I'll have an answer? I guess I'm confused, my apologies.
I'm hoping that maybe we could get a determination relatively quickly, so, but I was thinking that, let's say, you got it, let's say you got a determination on Monday. Does that give you enough time to put it on the agenda? So it sounds like it does, so you do it, yeah. So that's all. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't gonna pressure you for time and any notice requirements we may have about it, that's all.
Yes, and I just, this text Sam too, when I found the the section in the, in the bylaw, and I said that I would bring it up, and he said absolutely. So I can get further confirmation from him as well.
Okay. Alright, so, I guess.
Sound good, guys, so we'll we'll seek some further clarification on that, then we'll look to get you on the, on the next meeting, which is in two weeks.
November eighteenth at seven thirty. Hopefully, we'll have a determination by then, and we can resolve it on that, on that date.
Do you need anything else from us in the meantime?
I don't know.
I don't think at this time until we hear back from council, right?
Right, and I'm sure Rebecca would reach out if there was something that needed to be changed, maybe if it's a changed application or whatever the case may be. I'm sure that she will reach out if um, there is anything that's required. Because she's really good like that.
All my questions and everything, I'm new to all of this, so she's been answering everything for me, so.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm sure she will reach out if there's anything that she needs prior to the meeting. Um, so I guess what I'd like to do is to ask Chris and John, basically, I'd like to make a motion to continue this application to Wednesday, November eighteenth at seven thirty.
Second.
Chris? Chris, yea or nay?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. So, motion passes. So we will see you on the eighteenth, unless you hear from us prior of anything that comes up in between, or if we don't get a determination in time or or whatever, but I'm sure Rebecca will let you know.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda for us is minutes from the last meeting, October twenty-first, twenty twenty. Did you guys get a chance to review those?
Yeah, I read them.
Everything looks okay to me.
John?
Yes, they will find to me.
Okay, I I had two quick things, Rebecca. What?
Did you have a chance to review?
Yes, I did. So I had two, two quick things. One was on line eighty-five, uh, I think that word is supposed, it says growing, I think it's just supposed to be grow. And then yeah, it just sounded funny. And then the very last line, number one oh seven, uh, says that we adjourned at nine sixty-six PM. I think it was like nine.
Nine, nine fifty-six?
Or nine sixteen, I forget what it was, but nine thirty-six, maybe?
That, that meeting was just long, so.
It was very long, but yes, I will make sure to.
It only felt like it was sixty-six minutes longer. But that was it, so um, I guess, you want, guys, somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I will make a motion to accept the minutes from the Wednesday, October twenty-first, twenty twenty meeting as amended.
So Chris?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Okay. And then uh, the last item on the agenda is adjournment. So I will make a motion to adjourn at nine oh four PM.
Second.
Okay, Chris?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Kathy, hi. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks, guys.
Everybody.